All right. Madam Chair.
Okay. So first of all, welcome to everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order at 1:03 and do a quick roll call. And so we'll start with the Lafayette City Council Vice Mayor Candell. I mean, excuse me, Mayor Candell. We had our just moment. Congratulations.
Thank you, and you too, Vice Mayor Geringer.
Which I'm actually now making my family call me that. No, not. And then moving to the, and then I'm here, obviously. And then moving to the Lafayette School Board members, school board members. Wait, have you guys had your reorganization? And do I need to do title changes? Okay. So it's school board member Stern.
Here.
School Board Member PAC.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. And do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? And Rob, first of all, welcome. On one of our agenda items, we are going to discuss, again, revisit the structure of this group, but we as school board members and city council members are official parts of the sort of governing body, if you will. So that's why the roll call and the motions for adoption of agenda and those types of things. So, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. And I'm going to do an all, well, no, I have to do the, the roll call vote for the adoption of the agenda. So Mayor Candell.
Aye.
School Board Member Stern.
Aye.
School Board Member PAC.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so the adopted unanimously. And now moving on to item, agenda item number four is opportunity for public comments. And this is for public comments, not on the agenda for this city schools' agenda, but also still within the purview of the city schools' committee or subcommittee. And so with all of that admonition, do we have any public comments? And I don't see.
I do not see any public comment right now.
Yeah, Jen Paul.
Okay.
Yeah.
By the way, I'm gonna let Stella in as well, since we're kind of doing this a little more open.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to bring up the fact that I did attend the last city school subcommittee meeting, and we had stopped at a certain point with the intention that we were continuing the agenda. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I think I was a little confused by today's agenda, considering I thought it would be a continuation of the last one. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up. We, in scheduling the meeting, we had basically crafted the agenda, and we're going to continue the traffic and information where we were on the agenda from the last meeting. Mike Moran is not available, so we will continue that and we will continue that portion of the agenda at our next meeting, which will, we will work to schedule in January. But thank you very much. I actually should have mentioned that at the beginning, but thanks. And any other public comment? Okay.
Just so everyone knows, there was no email public comment.
Yes, I was just, thank you. I have, I've had to write down these little script things to make sure that, you know, I don't forget things. So if I do, you can gently, virtually nudge me under the table. So you, it doesn't hurt as much, but, so thank you very much. And welcome Superintendent Whitmore. We were discussing how luckily, we don't have to drive and find parking, but it's still sometimes just as hard to get from one meeting to the next. So we're glad that you're here. And so we will move on. There are no more other public comments, giving one more opportunity for that. And thank you for the, to the members of the public for being here. We will move on to item number five, and we will get an update on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and have a discussion around partnering. And so, let's see. Jennifer or Narup, shall I just call on the various represented entities here? Okay, so Mayor Candell, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. Thanks. So, so we had our last, most recent Equity and Inclusion Task Force meeting last week. And the big unfortunate news is that Cam Burks is no longer going to be on a member of the task force. But the good part of that, it allows Teresa and I to work more closely together without the Brown Act violations. And so we were kind of, so I'm sad, it's kind of a bittersweet combination. He'll, he'll still stay very much involved. So our, our last meeting, we had kind of a training session because of a bunch of events that have happened in our community involving racism and also kind of in terms of, I'll say, political inclusiveness is the nice term that I'm trying to use to describe the great divide between our political parties at the moment. And this is affecting our community. And I, I'm considering this as part of an inclusion opportunity for us to try to do better as a community, even in this politically charged climate. So, but I had personal contact with two people, two people that had, you know, racist issues involving their experience in our community. So we used those as a basis for a training session led by our wonderful facilitator from Circle Up Tiffany. And I, we use them to help people understand that things are happening right now, and also how to be an ally. How, if you witness it, how can you best help? And it kind of depended on the situation. It depends on a lot of different things. But I think almost all of us came away feeling empowered and better capable, better armed to maybe actually help out if we see something. I know other things, we got an update from Narup and Jennifer about our own task list that we had. We since had a follow-up meeting, Teresa and I, and we are embarking on the next steps. And I don't know, Teresa, since we haven't made those public, do you want to talk about how we want to move forward, or do you want to keep that for the next meeting?
I think conceptually, Jennifer had, had a great idea around the consortium. So I think it's good to get feedback there, because I see the, the schools as being a partner in that. So.
And I just kind of wanted to make sure. So, so the thought would be, is that, I've had, I got outreach from Mike McClure, the new mayor of Maraga even. And so he is very interested in expanding this to be a law Miranda issue. And I'll, I'll reach out also to Mayor Amy Werth. And the thought would be to kind of construct something like in the San Ramon Valley, where we get all of the stakeholders, all these groups that are fundamentally vested into racism, equity, inclusion issues, give them a forum and maybe opportunity to create and facilitate a coalition. And the whole concept would be, we want to be able to take direction from them. It shouldn't go the other way around, right? And that's how they've done it in the San Ramon Valley, and it's been extremely effective. And they do many events, they're, they have meetings, they've got forums, they've got all these things going on. And then the city just kind of helps out where they can and, and gives them a voice and, you know, opportunity. And, and we listen to them. And so we would like, we're going to see if that concept may work for Law Miranda. I think there's enough groups out there. And if we kind of get them all together and talking to each other and, and some power behind them, maybe we can help strengthen them. That is the, the concept, and we're gonna, we're gonna try it. So we'd love to get some feedback from anybody here on that. But also the update from Narup is that we have had training, staff is almost done with their training. Hopefully, we will pass it on to council and commissions next, and possibly to the community. We also passed an ordinance, an Equity and Inclusion Ordinance, which is just a really wonderful document that we can refer to in the future. So did I forget anything? Okay.
That's great. Thank you. So Superintendent Nickerson, John, would you like to provide an update on the DEI work in the Ocalanis District?
Sure. And first, just to, for Councilmember Candell, I, I think any mechanism that we can get our, our different groups, our schools, our cities, our other community groups together to, to think about these, these challenges, I, we would be very supportive of that concept and to help us all move forward together. So in the, the high school district, you know, I'll say that, that kind of the DEI work has, has been a priority for, a high priority in the district for about five years, but certainly events of the late spring, early summer, kind of catapulted the, the interest upward and got a lot more folks engaged. And there was a pretty strong interest to make it an even greater priority. And the district has responded and did lots of planning over the summer and kind of kicked off the year with a, a new board policy on racial equity. We, we have one on for equity, but we thought we needed to give the attention to racial equity in particular, just because of the experience we hear reported about some of our students and staff of color, as well as some of the persistent achievement gaps. And so, so we did that in August, and that was really a commitment of the board to kind of values of equity and a commitment to, to do certain things moving forward, to try to make some, some progress. Some of our work, I'll just highlight. We, in, in distance learning, everything is more challenging and certainly creating discourse with, with students on important issues like race, like identity, like how we, we treat each other is tough in a distance learning environment based in Zoom classrooms. And, but we were committed to create some dialogue. And, and we've had lots of opportunities in the last four or five years for students to engage in conversations around race. But a lot of them were kind of elective opportunities, as we, we called them, where students could choose to engage in a, a forum or a summit and really think deeply about kind of race and, and racial identity and how it plays out in our schools and greater society. So this year, we developed eight lessons so far that have been implemented in, in what we call our Cohort Academy, which is a period where a teacher and a group of 20 students, sometimes they're coupled together, so it's two teachers and 40 students, teach a lesson or facilitate dialogue around race. And so that's happened through the fall. It's gone relatively well, given the, the challenges with virtual classroom. And we look forward to opportunities going, going forward to create that, that discourse and that dialogue for all students, not just those students choosing to engage. This spring, we'll be doing a couple more lessons around race, and then we'll also be introducing a couple lessons on LGBTQ plus and helping the students engage in that conversation and deepen their understanding. Another thing we rolled out this year is what we call our BERT or Bias Incident Reporting. And it is a, a way for students to report some sort of bias, you know, with, with that they see, they experience with, with students or with staff members. And what's different about it, one, it's we, we really promoted it as an opportunity for students to express concern with something they're seeing. And the other thing is, we have a team that will respond to everyone and, and kind of kick it into a disciplinary, if that's, that's the direction it needs to go, or restorative place, if that's the direction it needs to go, or just a counseling place. So that's been relatively successful, and we're keeping data on that. You know, we are, our data on incidents in our high schools was not very robust, even though we knew students were experiencing racism and other isms that were making the campus less safe. We knew what was happening. We just didn't have a lot of reports, because students didn't see a place where they could come forward. So we think the BERT is beginning to address that, and we plan to track the data and continue to promote it and hopefully educate along the way and, and kind of transform the, the climate on campus. We've done some things on our curriculum. Our literature has continued to evolve. And, and at our board meeting last week, there was a, a discussion on our literature lists and making sure that all of our English classes are, are including books by female authors, as well as authors of color. And we are working on our social studies curriculum to make, make sure it includes diverse perspectives. And then we're, our course offerings are, are changing over time. Last year, we started offering ethnic studies for the first time. It's not a requirement, but it's an elective class that's gaining popularity. We have a new English class called Deconstructing Race that has grown in popularity. It's an English for elective. This year, we just added a new English for elective, or actually, it was just approved last week, will be offered next year. And it's women, women's literature. And so that will be good. The engagement of the community has never been so high. We have new DEI committees at all of our school sites with, with parents, very involved and interested, and they are pushing things forward, which is really exciting to partner with them. And then we meet district-wide as well. Our efforts, we've had about a five-year effort to really try to, to change the, the look of our staff to better match our student body. And we've had a lot of progress the last two years. As a matter of fact, this year are the teachers that we hired, just over 50% were teachers of color, which is a step in the right direction. There is a statewide, actually national, you know, shortage, so to speak, of teachers of color. And very few schools, no matter what their demographic, seem to represent the students with more white teachers than the, the student body. So, so that's, that's progress. And we've rolled out some new training with our athletic coaches. We know that some of the behaviors in our athletic teams is not desirable, whether it's straight-out racism or homophobia, sexism. And so we've, we rolled out some new training this year with our coaches, because we know that, that's a place that can get better, once we're back to playing sports full-time. So those are just some of the highlights that are happening at the high school. And we know we have so much more work to do, so that all of our, our students and staff feel included and feel safe on our campuses, see themselves in the curriculum. And so lots, lots of work to be done.
Thank you. And yeah, just, I note that you've been, both the districts have been working on it. And I definitely appreciate the intense focus in this area. And again, appreciate your reckoning, your offering of support at the beginning of your statements, because I do think that there's so many things going on. And as Mayor Candell pointed out, we have opportunities to collaborate, because we're not sort of reinventing the wheel on this, and we represent all the sort of same stakeholders and community members. Are there any questions from the council or school board members? I forgot to ask that when Mayor Candell spoke, so we can come back to that as well. But yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, John, I'd be interested in, in specific changes you implemented in order to attract a 50% increase or, or have 50% plus of your new hires be people of color. What did you do differently?
Yeah, and it's, it's really just casting a much broader net in the recruiting efforts and not just letting our district recruit for itself, which, when our district recruits for itself, it's very often, well, you get a different, different group applying than when you actively go out. And we went to some different graduate schools, teacher credentialing programs that have much more diverse populations and actively recruited there. And we had some student teachers from some, some of those schools that were student teachers of color. And they were successful with us and then wanted to continue. So those are just some of the strategies. We're, we're committed to hiring the best applicants. And our philosophy is, if we can broaden our applicant pool, it's more likely the best applicant might be a, a teacher of color. But we got to get them in the applicant pool first. So that, that's the basic strategy.
And when you say we, who, who specific, what, what group specifically are you referencing? Who participated in that expanded?
I mean, a lot of people are, are participating in the hiring, but really, the, the, you know, the, the driving person is our associate superintendent who oversees HR, Amy McNamara, who is a huge champion of, for racial equity and equity in general. And so she was kind of leading the, the recruiting efforts and made lots of the phone calls to, you know, different graduate schools and, and things like that.
And, and I don't know the answer to the following question, but you might. Do you see opportunities for the two districts to collaborate on that type of expanded recruitment, or is it so specific that there wouldn't be overlap and ability to, to work together?
Well, I think we're always looking for opportunities. I'm sure we might be able to learn some good strategies from Lafayette School District, and they might.
No, I'm, I'm not being clear. So, so I'm envisioning that you're going out to a group that has a more diverse pool. And I'm wondering if your individual has the ability to represent the broader districts, or is that pool specific to teachers who are going to teach at the high school level, in which case the answer would be probably not?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, we, we absolutely, I know Lafayette School District doesn't have, you know, assistant superintendent of HR, so we could absolutely offer some coordination in some places. I'm sure we can, we can work together, work together, and we'll, we'll both be better as an outcome. So I'll, I'll follow up with Mr. Whitmore and see, see what they're doing and, and see if we can kind of share, share some ideas and strategies and, and maybe a couple, couple some things. But it is, it is typically a phone call to somebody we know, working in a graduate school that has a diverse group of teachers and training, and will say, hey, we are really looking for math and physics teachers. This is a great place to work, you know, send them a little bit of literature, and we'd love to see some applicants. So sometimes it's as simple as that. And sometimes there's job fairs that we will travel to, rather than just to Contra Costa County. We'll travel a little bit further to get some more diverse areas. And so anyways, I, I can certainly exchange ideas with Mr. Whitmore.
Madam Chair, excuse me. The good news is, we have had a huge turnout for this meeting. The bad news is, I think it's too big to kind of continue in the informal mode. So I'm going to start moving the public over to the attendee section, and we'll go back to using the raise your hand function if you have a public comment. So bear with me while I move folks over. We'll just have the committee members here in attendance. But great turnout. Nice job, everybody.
Thank you. And thank you, Jeff. Do you want us to wait just a few moments as people are moved over?
Yeah, just take half a sec.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as you're not calling on the public, yeah, you can go ahead and continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, School Board Member Stern, eventually I'll just say Rob and Suzie and John and Richard. But did you have follow-up questions?
No, thanks.
Did you get your answer? Thank you. And I believe Mayor Candell had her hand up next.
I do. I just want to applaud you for the, that topic that we were just talking about. That's, that's really great. And the BERT, the incident reporting, I bet that is going to be very successful. Great idea. So my question is, I don't want to talk about it, but do you have an update about the Campolindo Assistant Principal and anything going on?
Yeah, so first, just, Mayor Candell, just as you mentioned, BERT, our, our school websites are posting that data for kind of full transparency. So I think it's once a month, they update it. So it's something, every school website has a, a DEI page, and you can see that, that data on, on there. So yeah, the, the community, I think there's been a lot of discussion about an, an incident that involved an associate principal at Campolindo. And, and, you know, it's one of those, those tough incidents where Maraga PD has truly, truly made this a, a top priority in their investigation. I have met with Chief King and talked about how thorough they're, they're being. Frankly, I, I think it's unlikely that they will have conclusive findings on what happened, who was involved, things of that nature. Right now, we are focusing on Vanessa Knight, who's the Associate Principal, and making sure that she is feeling safe and trying to address her needs. And then we're trying to focus our efforts on the bigger issue that we know is an issue and that members of our community experience racism. There are some of our, members of our community don't feel included because of race, and some of them do not feel safe because of race. And so we're trying to bring the focus to the greater work that we need to do and, and supporting Vanessa Knight, so that she is, she is comfortable and she thrives at Campolindo.
Thank you. Any other questions from the school board members or, so thank, so thank you very much, John, and thank you for.
Let me turn off her video and maybe we'll get her back in.
Sounds great.
All right. There we go. I think, okay.
You muted, Teresa? Okay.
My system just decided that I needed to take a break. What I was getting ready to say is, we'll go on to Superintendent Whitmore for his update. And then after that, I will open the opportunity for public comment and public questions. So Superintendent Whitmore.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Geringer. First, I just want to acknowledge upfront that Ocalanis and Dr. Nickerson have been doing this work kind of at a district level for many years. And I think it's been a great opportunity for us to look at the work they're doing and learn from it and take advantage of it. As, you know, there had been work going on in our schools, but it tended to be happening at school-by-school level and not so much at the district-wide level. So it's been really a good collaboration for us to be able to, first of all, for the past couple of years, just tag on to some of the work that they were doing and take advantage of training that they were offering their employees, and also borrow some consultants and just have an ongoing dialogue about all these issues and how they play out in our school communities and, and broader community. So many thanks for the leadership on all of this. I'll just, I'll try to go through kind of stakeholder group by stakeholder group to talk about what we're doing. We had some plans in place to pull a district committee together. The first meeting was supposed to be March 17th. As you probably know, that meeting did not happen as intended. But we finally did get our committee up and running a couple months later. And now have a standing district committee meeting, the first and third Thursdays of each month. So we feel like we're building our own district dialogue around these issues of diversity, equity, inclusion. And, and again, as John described, with that focus on race, which is so important in this moment that we're living in right now. So at the leadership level of the district, we're going through a training. So at the leadership level of the district, we're going through a training around racial equity with the facilitator and consultant that Akalani's has been using for many years. And that's the four cabinet members and the, the five principals and the four assistant principals who work in the district. And we're both kind of growing our understanding of what real anti-racism is in a school context, what our own personal history with race is and how that might affect how we come into these conversations and just learning how to have conversations about race with each other. All the principals have been pretty keenly aware of the need to focus on it at the school level this year. And so they've been taking on their own leadership roles on their own campuses, being present in classrooms and with parent and student groups and making sure that those conversations about race are happening at every one of our schools and doing things like a lot of read alouds of relevant textbooks or storybooks. So our students gain a deeper understanding of race from their first days that they're in our, our virtual classrooms right now, but classrooms. With our teachers, we've been able to, we've had half our teachers go through training again that we learned about through Akalani's and the work they've been doing for five or six years on this front. So we were able to bring that teacher training into our district. We've had 150 teachers go through it. The second 50 teachers just started about a week ago. And when they finish up their training, that will mean half, half of our teachers will have been trained on how to come into the classroom without bias and also gaining that understanding of their own personal history with race and how it might affect their teaching and their work with their students. Another thing that's happening with our teaching staff is that they're really looking, we have a small group of teachers that's formed to play a leadership role and we have one from each elementary campus. They're really looking at curriculum issues and working with teachers at their campuses to both kind of broker ideas and also broker questions. Hey, what's the best way to address this kind of issue or that kind of issue? I think, you know, Thanksgiving was a great turning point for us because we had some district wide dialogue about Thanksgiving. We had actually one of John's teachers and another parent leader in our community put together a training about how to teach Thanksgiving and be inclusive of different perspectives in the delivery of Thanksgiving based experiences. And it definitely means you don't bring 24 kids in and make 12 of them wear pilgrim hats and another 12 of them wear Native American outfits. There, there's a lot of work we can do around these major holidays to, to deepen understanding and especially with the younger kids we're serving. And one of the most interesting things that, that we've done on this front, that I think this group will be particularly appreciative of, there's a longstanding LSF and now LPI lesson on Lafayette history. And at the encouragement of some of our teachers and, and some of our district committee members, we were able to sit down, have a group of third grade teachers really roll up their sleeves and look at that Lafayette history unit. You guys that are parents of students in the district probably remember your kids doing this in third grade. And pre pandemic, they walked around town and saw some of the landmarks in Lafayette. So we're really trying to deliver that Lafayette history in a way that includes multiple perspectives about this land that we live on, how it was settled, when it was settled, all those kinds of questions. I haven't seen any of it myself yet, but, but I definitely wanted to dive in and, and relearn Lafayette history at some point. With our students, we've been working at every school to have a student based program. And our, our principals in collaboration with their school based committees agreed to bring a program called No Place for Hate, which is sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League into all four elementary school campuses. The board got to see a little taste of it a couple of meetings ago. And then Stanley has a student based program called SLAM that has an outside facilitator come in to work with some of our students on these issues around creating an anti-racist environment at our school. With our parent stakeholders, we do have active committees at each school. I think this year is the first time we can say we have a really active committee going at all five schools. And then we did start up the district wide committee, as I mentioned at the beginning. And I think the district wide committee has been really useful, both to kind of corroborate what's going on from school to school and share best ideas and also to work with me at the district level to make sure that we're moving all our schools forward kind of day by day, month by month on, on a continuous improvement program to, to have anti-racism and racial equity be hallmarks of the district. We have been working on a board policy. A group of parents got together, again, looked at the Akalani's policy, which I know John said they had been working on for a couple of years before they, I think he said a couple of years at one point, but definitely it took a long period of time. They had been working on it all along and then got to a moment in time where it became important to adopt it. So we're borrowing language from the Akalani's policy, looking at what makes sense in an elementary setting. And hopefully that's something that we can bring to our board early in the new year and have kind of clear policy guidance as well as maybe some administrative expectations about what action plans will look like in our district. So that is a quick update from us. I might go grab a glass of water at some point.
Great. Thank you very much. Just very quickly, are there any questions from, I know the school board members here that, you know, and are actively involved in this, but Mayor Candell, do you have a question or comment?
I have a, a comment to both of you. I, I thank you for your presentations. And I keep telling my kids that they're going to save us someday because we adults make a mess of things. You guys are creating a better future for all of us and I, I really, really thank you for your efforts. I, I wish you all the luck. Hope you are successful.
Thank you. Well said. And that we can partner through that. I did have one question. I know, I believe I know that the library is also doing work. Are they partnering directly with both districts, doing their own initiative? Are they part of the Lafayette? And if we don't know, it's, they're one of the groups that we would also reach out to in terms of this consortium or coalition.
We are doing, you know, I was like, hmm, but, but we are doing something with the library actually to bring in some authors who both are people of color and also write from the perspective of young people of color. So I, there's a publisher that's Bay Area based who's going to work with us to kind of infuse a little bit of programming through, through these books.
And I, uh, I'm, and I'm sure there's much more partnership than I'm aware of, but like the La Merinda Reads project, I want to say last year they did Dear Martin, which is a, a great quick read. And I know all of our high schools participated with, with that in the Contra Costa libraries, Lafayette included. So.
Yeah. So lots of opportunities there as well. And then just a comment. I also can't wait to relearn the history of Lafayette from the third grade perspective in that unit that LPI and the, their grade teachers are working on updating. So, so now do we have any people from the public who would, any members of the public who would like to weigh in on this topic?
Well, let's, uh, let's remind folks to use the raise your hand function if you would like to provide public comment. Or if you are joining us by telephone, go ahead and use star nine. So with that, we have one hand raised. It'd be great if everyone raised their hand one time. So you know, we can get you in as quickly as possible. We know how many people we have. But here comes Yuki Fujimoto.
Hi, Yuki. Welcome.
Um, I really wanted to thank each and every one of you for making this effort. It's been a difficult eight, nine months for a lot of families of color or students of color. And I really urge the city to continue partnering with the school district. With the recent event with Ms. Knight, it's been really upsetting to think that we are unable to find the perpetrators. And to think that she has to come to work feeling unsafe. It is not the first time we have not figured out who, or, you know, I'm not going to say students. It could be community members who try to vandalize the Burton Valley BLM marquee at the beginning of the school year. And I don't know if we ever found perpetrators of the swastika that was painted on a Lafayette home. So these incidents are coming and they're going to continue to come no matter who is in the leadership position of our country, because a lot of people still support this ideal of American exceptionalism. So I urge the city and the school district to continue this work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yuki. Any questions for the speaker? Okay. Any additional public comment, Jeff?
No, no public comment at this time.
See any hands raised either. So, so anyway, thank you all very much for the update. And again, just that theme of working, looking forward to working together as we go forward is, I think, is exciting to deal with something that is very, I don't have all the right words for it, but troubling and unfortunately very prevalent in our society. And so I look forward to working with all of you on that. And moving from this topic to item number six on the agenda is a discussion of meeting scheduling and subcommittee purpose. So it's basically having a discussion about this gathering, you know, sort of why we're here, what we want to focus on as we go forward. How many times do we want to meet so we can sort of set some expectation around purpose, number of meetings and priority issues, recognizing that over the course of time, we have had group committees, subcommittees that have formed between at least the Lafayette School District and the city relative to issues that rose to a high level of importance. And we're still, it will be one of our highest level of importance now, public safety and transportation. But if we set a meeting, sort of meeting schedule and then met as needed on those issues that arise, we just wanted to have an opportunity to come to some agreement. And as most people will remember, and we pulled out, Jennifer, thank you. We pulled out the full report of the strategic objective, number three, city schools partnership, which is the, was an effort of the, the city of Lafayette. And Mayor Candell and I served on that committee. Dr. Nick, lots of people provided input into that. And once it was all said and done with all the supporting documentations, documentation, I think it was 49 pages. It's not required reading, but out of the summary of that, it was basically that we on the council wanted to elevate this relationship. We've had it for a very long time. We've all, both sides, I believe, both the school districts and the city have, you know, worked towards strengthening and developing the relationship and we wanted to institutionalize that or codify that as a priority. So the city made this through the city council vote and a recommendation from the subcommittee, a standing subcommittee of the council. So before it was, I don't know what, but anyway, now it's a standing subcommittee. And so we have council members who are the liaisons of that. We have staff assigned to it. And continuing with our traffic and transportation, public safety ad hoc committee, the school district already had that in a rotation as well for Lafayette School District. As part of our effort with the strategic objective, we also wanted to include the Akalani's Union High School District in that effort, recognizing that Akalani's, you know, has five communities that they interact or serve. And two of them, two of the schools overlap Lafayette. So wanting to include and wanting to have that partnership. And so then COVID happened. We didn't have our joint meeting. We didn't really get this off, you know, the ground and resume meetings until just a month, like less than a month ago. And now as a city, we want to remedy that. We'd like to move that forward. And we'd like to understand from our partners sort of what, what your expectations, what your ideas are about how to continue that. And is it a formal? Anyway, just basically working through how we move forward. Do we have quarterly meetings and then reaching some agreement on the initial priorities? So at that, Mayor Candell, did you have or staff anything to add on sort of how we're framing the discussion? And so I guess one of the first, I think, rather than even I was getting tongue tied around structure, I think if we wanted to talk about sort of the benefit we see of this and our priorities for working together, we could start there. And I would, anybody who wants to jump in from the school side, please do.
I can certainly jump in. So the, the Akalani's district, I mean, we're, we're very interested in, in the partnership. And, you know, we, we do have the pleasure of working with multiple cities. And I don't know whether it's because our district office is located here, but the outreach from Lafayette to partner has always been extraordinary. So I appreciate that. You know, because we extend into multiple cities, I don't know if we would have two board members participate, but I would imagine there would be at least one that would be interested in attending a quarterly meeting, say. And, and we certainly have interest in continuing partnerships in, in some areas. Obviously the, the partnership with Lafayette police on, on various issues has really evolved into a productive relationship and a student centered relationship, which is great. I think we're, we're kicking off some more formal partnerships and DEI work, which I'd love to see kind of blossom and, and kind of capitalize on, on, you know, the, the greater participation. I've talked about it before and I don't know what the solutions are, but I think there's joint interest in, in having conversations and looking at programs to support the mental health of, of our adolescents. And I think we were all shook quite a bit about a year and a half ago with the, the suicide. And somebody who was receiving a lot of mental health support from the high school, from Akalani's High School. And then summer came and we had nothing. And so kind of the notion of what, what, how can we bridge some of the mental health support into the summer working with city in a partnership? And then, you know, certainly I know traffic is often a headliner in these meetings. And that's certainly something that, that we would be part of a conversation. So those are just some, some quick thoughts and, you know, a quarterly meeting and then maybe subgroups coming off, off as needed for particular projects, I think makes sense. And I'm pretty confident we have our reorg meeting tomorrow night. And if there's a calling, I'm pretty confident there'll be a, a board member interested in, in participating.
Thank you.
And then I guess I should go next. This seems to be the order. And I have too much to add to what John said. I think the two chunks of the partnership with the police department are that traffic and safety piece and also the. are that traffic and safety piece and also the emergency services piece that we talked about quite a bit last time. And look forward to continuing that work. I think we all know kind of some action steps that we can pursue in both those realms. The DEI obviously has been the topic of our discussion today. I know John and I have gone around a little bit on mental health and possibilities for the city in that realm. So just reinforce John's message on that. And then the one thing that I recall being a little strand of conversation in the earlier city committee was youth leadership. And not treating it each in our own domains as separate and distinct, but maybe figuring out a way to do something that's coordinated, at least periodically. You have your youth commission, John has his student leadership, we have our student leadership, maybe there's a way to bring them together. Either for experiential learning on their part or put them to work for some community good. Or there's lots of things I think we can do in a youth leadership context.
Perfect. Thank you. And quarterly meetings with some subcommittee work on the side as needed? Sounds like good timing.
Sure.
Yeah. So school, school board member PAC or STORM, any other? You know, Susan, you've been part of this from the, from sort of the beginning of the us sitting around the table and looking at that strategic objective. So.
Yes, and I, I agree with the, the very long list of, of things that potentially partnership opportunities. Two things that I am thinking about is the practicality of, of, I know we're talking about subcommittees. All of those topics that have been brought up in today's meetings and that we think about that each of the different agencies plays a part in and can help with is the practicality of how, how to get the input and then how to get the work done. So I would, I would like to think about or talk about how, how that would actually happen. So that, so that it's not just a great, there's a list of a lot of things that could happen. And we, how are we going to decide what we're going to tackle first? I mean, obviously some of these things are still in, in motion, but what, something's got to move to the top and how are we going to get there? The other thing I think is really important is I, I know that we have less than half the attendees on this call as members of the public. But also getting public input as much as we can and just varying perspectives. So we at some point used to have at least one public meeting a year, but in person, something again. But an opportunity for the public to weigh in where they would have an audience of the superintendents, the city, city council and school board in one place. Because I am certain that there are things that we have not thought of that are not on this long and growing list. Or different perspectives or different ways to look at potential solutions to what we have identified as problems. So those are, I just wanted to share those thoughts.
And on the joint, Naru?
A couple of thoughts come to mind. The purpose of this group meeting once a quarter is really to check in, to make sure that we're all serving our constituents consistently and well. But I also hear another charge, which is we have action items in various categories and we need to tackle them or get them off the list now. That, what raises, the questions it raises in my mind are, one, this is a committee of not the full board or the full council. So things you need direction, this seems to be a recommending body that takes matters to the full council. So I think we need to be mindful of that. And secondly, action items, I would recommend that you leave those to your staff and your, the people who, who do the work. So give us policy direction, give us directives. And then we will report back at the end of the quarter about the status of those tasks. So just a couple of things to be mindful of.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Councilmember STORM, did you have?
Yeah, obviously I'm, I'm the new one to this group. So I, I, I'm a bit reluctant to, to, to speak because I don't, I don't want to cover old ground. But, but my view at least is the relationship with the city goes, is I, I think it's a great relationship. And I'm proud of the work that our city does and, and of the folks that we have there. I, I think that, you know, in, in my view, where we've come up short is in, and, and this is consistent Naru with your last comment, is in the actual execution. And I think that, I mean, frankly, Jen, you're on the line and, and I appreciate your persistence over the years on, on traffic, safety and, and those issues. And concededly, we haven't made progress. We just haven't. And so I, I would like to see, and, and there's obviously some governance nuances to it. But I would like to see us have specific goals, not only prioritization, but what does success look like? What do we expect to achieve within a period of time? And then have that be our north star of, of actually executing on the things that, that we talk about. I'm a big fan of meeting regularly. It will allow everybody to plan thoughtfully and prioritize actually being here. It's hard, I know, you know, traffic, for example, we're not going to talk about because, you know, when you schedule things without a lot of time, it's hard to. So I, I think having a regular cadence. I mean, I, I think no less frequently than quarterly. I'm, I, I'd be open to meeting more frequently, frankly, if we thought that would be helpful, both in terms of facilitating discussion and putting in anchors that would essentially force us to satisfy our commitments to, to execute. I think a lot of times meetings tend to do that. They don't have to be long meetings, but people do naturally sort of plan around them. And so if we thought that that would be helpful, I'd certainly be open to meeting even more regularly than, than, than that. Go, I, I, I think, you know, if you don't mind me just sort of sharing an additional concept. We've spoken in the past about opportunities in housing. I still think that's an area of opportunity, housing that would be for, for a partnership, housing for teachers and staff. I think we had talked about that at the last joint. And that's something I personally would welcome us revisiting as an area of opportunity. I think that would be a win-win both for the, for the city and satisfying its obligations for affordable housing and, and for the various districts that would benefit if we had commitments to that. I know in my participation in the homeowners council, we've had developers come in. And for the most part, they've had complete unawareness of the opportunity. And so my, my hope and perhaps expectation is, is that with some education, they might see advantages as well. And, and convert a win-win into a win-win-win, which I think would be, would be useful.
Thank you. Mayor Candell?
Yes, thank you. Thank you guys all. I am in support of all this. I think, and I, and Rob, I understand your, your urge to get things going. So last night, my, literally my first priority this year is to try to get some traffic improvements around our school, quick and cheap. It's something that we planned for and the, and the solutions have always been really kind of big and expensive. And I, I think that we have a new safe track study that just came in, plus some, some women out of Burton Valley who are, one of them is a actual traffic consultant who's been, that I've been working with. And hopefully we'll push that forward and we'll get at least, you know, a couple, you know, they're more like pilots. Maybe they won't be forever, forever things, but you know, at least we'll get our, our foot in the ground and starting something. It definitely is a priority for me because I've done a lot of studies as well too. And just want to branch out and try something new and hopefully I can get that done this year.
Yeah. And with respect to those type of projects, I think Naru, Naru's words are probably important to keep refreshing in our. Just freeze up.
Yep, it froze up.
Richard, I stopped your video. You may want to restart it.
We can hear you though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that's the most important thing. Those words of wisdom from Naru should stay present, you know. Getting the work done is city staff, district staff from John or me. And I think we, you know, we know some of the things we need to do, both some of those pilot areas that people want to explore. And then some hard projects that I think we know, we can look at. And we just have to agree on funding and timing and, and this would be more a place to report back than it would be to make decisions for all the reasons Naru articulated.
Thank you. And before I make additional comments, we'll go to public comment. And then I do have some thoughts based on everyone's comments and Naru and our administrators sort of reminders about sort of the next, planning for the next meeting, but public comment.
All right, we do have one hand raised and if anyone else would like to provide, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I saw, go ahead.
Yeah. So we have one hand raised and if anyone else would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand now. With that, Jennifer Paul is going to be joining the meeting.
Hello again. Thank you. I just wanted to bring up that as board member PAC stated, parents and other community members have, I think, invaluable input, but it's very difficult when agendas and announcements about the meeting come out just at the 24 hour mark. This came out at 10:36, I believe, yesterday morning. So if there is, I know that at the last agenda, at the last meeting, we did discuss that meetings would be with more frequency. So I just would respect that we talk to the community members, whether it's in the almost daily briefing as it was today. But in the parent newsletters and other venues, I think that that's really helpful to get the parent involved, uh, school involvement as well as other members. The other thing is that to have continuity between the meetings, I would respectfully suggest that especially when we're in a post-COVID world someday, we won't necessarily have these videos to look back upon to see what was said. So if there's any way to have minutes at meetings, even if they're very brief, that would be helpful to move items from one meeting to the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Great. Thank you, Jen.
Okay, no more public comment at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you for all of that input. I did, I did want to share and, and I, I think we can send the strategic objective three out to everyone. There's, there, the council did approve basically moving forward, having the joint meeting. And I believe at our last meeting that was placed onto staffs on their to-do list to try to begin looking at dates in the new year that we can have a joint city, city, school, city council meeting. In the past, it has been Lafayette Elementary School District and the city of Lafayette. And so I'm going to, you know, defer to Dr. Nickerson and Naru or staff to work on whether or not it makes sense. Because I know as of right now, there's one Lafayette school board member, but I would imagine all of them would be, or Lafayette member who's on the school board of Akalani's. But I imagine that there might be interest. So one priority, getting that meeting scheduled and moving forward. On the various priorities and topic issues that came up, two of them were highlighted. And they did come out of the last joint meeting and also out of the strategic objective work was the traffic and transportation and safety around our schools and public safety, emergency. And also, so emergency services came up over the last year and just practical application and just how we were partnering. But the other thing that was on that list were various land use issues that may come up. And so the first one that sort of jumps up to the top was the sort of partnering or efficient use of fields. Land use could be an area where the council has said, let's, you know, look at these items. I don't remember that, Rob, and I'll, we can read that again or bring it back to council specifically about affordable housing. But I know that it has been discussed in the past on both of our respective bodies. So what I would like us to do or like to suggest that we do is to work on scheduling a meeting in January so that we can resume the agenda items that we didn't get to last time, which not surprisingly are in the area of traffic and safety around our school sites. And it continues to be a priority. And so to have that come back and we apologize for the agenda, there was a change. There was an agenda that either went out or was ready to go out, but it had all the transportation and traffic on it. So we will work to schedule a meeting in January. We will have transportation and traffic. We will have, I think, a recommendation to have standing updates. And so staff has prioritized what was on the agenda last time related to traffic and public safety. And if they have changes in that, they can recommend that and bring, bring that back to us. We all review the agenda just before, you know, it goes out. And it's, so if it's the sort of will of the body, I think we have a set agenda that all of these different topics fall into. And at that next meeting, we can look at how we want to tackle other items and look at how we want to prioritize those with the understanding that we will have to take them back to our respective bodies to approve those as priorities of either the school district or the city and in how that works within your organization. So, does that work? I see general nodding. I see Naru saying, wait a minute. No. You're on mute.
It totally works. I'm wondering if we can, we can say that this group will meet on the third Tuesday of every quarter. So that would be January 19th would be the first day. Or whatever date or time, day of the week or time is convenient for all. So that we know, like, I know that Judy Carney has her meetings on the last Mondays of every month. The public is aware that this committee meets once a quarter, the third Tuesday of every, of that, of the, of the first month of the quarter. Just throwing that out as a suggestion because it gives some predictability to it. And people are not waiting for the agenda to come out to the last moment.
I think having a set date, I know that one of the things that's always been, we've tried to be sensitive to is not during, in, in the before times, not during drop off in the morning, trying to be, you know, respectful of parents' time, of people working. So I absolutely agree. If we can agree on a set time that we believe also helps to promote authentic public engagement. I think that's great and it works better, I think, for all of us.
And, and is there some reason why in the post pandemic, we can't allow participation via Zoom, just as we're doing now?
I think absolutely there's no reason not to. We actually discussed it briefly last night in having a hybrid, hybrid opportunities going forward. And so.
Including ourselves.
That we have to, well, this particular body, because well, we are on the Brown Act. So I think they're still working out, they being the legislature and how that, how it will work out with the Brown Act. and how that, how it will work out with the Brown Act. On can the actual elected leaders of the bodies still meet virtually? I haven't seen any updates on that yet.
Okay, and that's even, even though we, I mean, even though we don't have a quorum of any of the bodies.
This subcommittee, we might be able to do that. It is, we do have noticing and all of that relative to this. But that's something that we'll have to look at. But definitely the theory of having virtual meetings and hybrid meetings to continue to encourage the increase in accessibility is definitely something that we, at least of us as a city, have been talking about briefly.
Thanks.
Okay. So then, who, with, so I believe that the city staff. Oh, I believe the city's, oh, hold on, go ahead, Richard. I was just going to say, I believe that Jennifer will help schedule the next meeting, but Richard, go ahead.
I was just going to say, with respect to a standing meeting, I would say later in the week tends to be better on school calendars than like, just, I know he was just, it may have been a hypothetical, Naru, but.
Yes.
Like Tuesday in the middle of the day, like caused time for me, so.
Yeah, yeah. So we will send out, we, the collective, we, Jennifer or at someone at the staff of Lafayette, will send out a, some, however we do it, a polling, a doodle, something to try and find a calendar. We will, go ahead, Jennifer?
I was just going to say, I think I've received direction in the past to work through Sharon at the Lafayette School District and Yvonne at Akalani's Union. So I can coordinate with both of them so that they can manage their respective bodies.
Yay. Yeah. Such as they can manage their respective, such as you can manage us. But yes, no, that will be great. And then we will pull together the agenda and make sure that it meets with everyone's sort of approval. We haven't dropped things. And we will go forward and we will tackle and accomplish things. And in the meantime, unless there's anything else, any other public comment or anything else for the good of the order, happy holidays to everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy so that we will have, be able to meet in-person time sooner rather than later. And thank you to the man behind the curtain, Jeff Hayman, for keeping us moving forward in our meeting. So happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Take care. Happy holidays, everybody. Thanks.
And look at that, four two thirty.
Thank you.